Good evening, everyone. The November 2nd, 2020 Virtual Legislative Meeting of the Anarondale County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Mr. Pruski?
Yes.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Rodvian?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Madam Auditor?
Present.
And Madam Legislative Counsel?
Present.
Madam Chair, all council are present.
Thank you. Please pause for the invocation. Councilwoman Lacy will lead us tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sarah Lacy, District 1. As I was thinking about the invocation for tonight, I realized this is our February 29th of county council meetings. This is the only time in four years that we have a meeting on the eve of a general election. And so I am sure everybody, you know, with all made of our minds, we voted. If you're listening out there tonight, if you haven't voted, I'm sure our invocation would be, please vote tomorrow. Get your vote in, please participate. And I think it's also appropriate at this time for us to give our many thanks and appreciation to our Board of Elections, to everyone who has volunteered, to all the folks working the polls, to all the election judges, to every, every person along that entire process who's dedicated themselves to making sure that our democracy is upheld by what we have been doing these past few weeks and by our actions at the ballot box tomorrow. The county council, I think, would, all of us, all seven of us, would be saying, thank you tonight and keep it up tomorrow. Thank you for what you've done.
Now for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Fiedler will lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, will you please read the Open Meetings Act statement at this time?
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. "The Maryland Open Meetings Act, a state law, requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, provisions of the county charter and the rules of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held at the county seat meeting in Annapolis. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the governor's various executive orders limiting public gatherings. While the virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, allowing written public comments to the legislation be filed with the clerk and considered by the council, and now allowing the public to call in or appear via Zoom and testify live. The county Office of Law has appined that the public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the OMA. The Office of Law has also reviewed whether with these technological features in place, it is still necessary to suspend Council Rules 3105 and 3106 that require public participation and reasonable seating for the public and the media. The conclusion is that it is not necessary to suspend these rules for the same reason. They have concluded that the measures implemented by the council for virtual meetings satisfy the reasonably, reasonable accessibility requirement under the OMA. The virtual format of the meeting allows public participation and media access as required by the rules and also allows unlimited participation that is not subject to seat capacity limits in the chambers or in the building. For these reasons, they have concluded that the requirements of Rules 3105 and 3106 are being satisfied, and therefore, it is not necessary to waive these rules. Council also asked whether it is necessary to suspend Rules 3102 and 3103, which require the meetings to be held in the county seat. In 2013, at the request of the council, the Office of Law appined that a council member who was appearing at a meeting via a live video monitor would satisfy the venue requirement through virtual presence. It is noted that the administrative officer to the council controls the hearing and is present in the Anarondale Center during these meetings, and the virtual meeting is hosted by the assisted administrative officer from a location in Annapolis. These factors support the Office of Law's conclusion that the meetings are being held at the county seat, and therefore, it is not necessary to suspend Rules 3102 and 3103."
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we had 26 submissions of written testimony for invitation to audience, which was shared with the council and posted on the council website.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time. We have one individual signed up to speak on matters not listed on the agenda. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have Mr. Adam Wyndham. Are you with us tonight, Mr. Wyndham?
Yes, I am.
Good evening, sir. You may begin.
Good evening. I was disheartened and taken back by the dismissiveness toward the public during the last council meeting. How can we sit here and forcefully read all statistics about COVID while ignoring other deaths such as those from preventable medical error, which has been shown to be the third-leading cause of death in the U.S.? However, it is not tracked nor talked about. A 2016 study led by Dr. Martin McCary, a professor of surgery and health policy at Johns Hopkins, showed over 250,000 patients die per year from preventable medical error. Another study shows over 400,000. Quote, "Throughout the world, medical error leading to patient death is an under-recognized epidemic," McCary wrote in the British Medical Journal. Let that sink in. 250,000 to 400,000 people in the U.S. die per year from preventable medical error. More people are dying from preventable medical error than COVID, yet we have not shut down the medical industry. McCary also said the medical industry continually makes the same mistakes over and over again because nothing's done about it. He compared it to how the aviation industry is heavily scrutinized when there's an error which results in industry-wide lesson learned. So what is the endgame with a persistent back-and-forth political dance with the governor and the county executive? Are we waiting for a vaccine to save us? An article President Obama retweeted this summer quoted Johns Hopkins vaccine expert Dr. Ruth Karen as saying, "A vaccine is not going to result in this virus going away." Even comedian and liberal political commentator Bill Maher gets it and recently told Jimmy Kimmel, "We should protect the vulnerable and the rest of us should be living a more normal life." As we saw with the recent private school drama, politics, not science, was the driving force. We saw the same with sports in the county, and then we saw it with the reopening of schools with the recent flip-flop to appease the unions. Not even council members can get objective answers. Recently, Dr. Cali Anarama specifically said it was MDH and MSDE policy, "All students wear a mask," in response to a question about AECPS requiring disabled students to wear a mask, else they be denied a free, appropriate public education. MDH, MSDE, the governor's order, and the CDC all explicitly allow medical exemptions for disabled students. Everyone needs to challenge their cognitive biases and look to serve this county with objectivity and actively seek ways to move us back to a more normal life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I would move pursuant to Rule 5-10, excuse me, not, let me try that again. Despite the fact that I think under Rule 5-106 that this is not necessary to suspend the rules to hear Resolution 4720 and vote on it tonight, I will still make a motion that we suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution 4720 this evening as we did the last two meetings with two other resolutions, Resolution 4120 and Resolution 4220. So I'm hopeful that my colleagues will join me in the practice that we have continued to do recently for these kind of things. Thank you.
Thank you. My only concern is that Resolution 4720 has not currently been read into the record yet. Madam Secretary, I'm happy to entertain this motion if this is the appropriate time, or is there another time to entertain this motion?
I think we have others to do this for, and normally what we do is we read everything in that's being introduced, and then anything that anybody would like to suspend the rules on after it's read in, then we can suspend the rules. So it's an appropriate motion, just hold it for a moment.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion that a partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Councilman Andrew Pruski.
May I have a second?
Rodvian, second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of October 19th, 2020.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 6:00 PM. Ms. Hare gave the invocation, followed by Ms. Fiedler leading the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2020 meeting?
So moved, Councilman Andrew Pruski.
May I have a second?
Rodvian, second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. The minutes of the October 19th, 2020 meeting stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 9520, An Ordinance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement, Fire Prevention Code Amendments. Bill Number 9620, An Ordinance Concerning Approval of Private Disposition of County-Owned Property Formerly Known as the Papa John's Farm Located Along New Cut Road in Severn, Maryland. Bill Number 9720, An Ordinance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies Veterans Affairs Commission. Bill Number 9820, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Utilities, Mayo Water Reclamation Sub-District. Bill Number 9920, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Glenn Burney Sustainable Community Overlay Area Uses.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please, please read the titles of any resolutions to be read, to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 4320, Resolution Approving the Continued Service of Michael Borges as Acting Superintendent Department of Detention Facilities. Resolution Number 4420, Resolution Approving the Nominations of Members of the Anarondale County Human Relations Commission. Resolution Number 4520, Resolution Confirming Appointments to the Board of Trustees for the Anarondale County Retiree Health Benefits Trust. Resolution Number 4620, Resolution Supporting the Anarondale County Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2022 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program Request for Submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction. Resolution Number 4720, Resolution Supporting Law Enforcement Agencies and Their Leaders, Officers, and Deputies Who Serve the Communities of Anarondale County, Maryland, and Disapproving the Efforts to Delegitimize the Honorable Profession of Law Enforcement.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have several resolutions that need to be voted on this evening. We will vote on Resolution Numbers 44-20 and 45-20 later this evening. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 43-20 after the bills this evening?
Councilman Pruski, so moved.
May I have a second?
Rodvian, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution 43-20 after all bills this evening.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey? Mr. Volkey, I'm sorry.
I said aye.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on Resolution 4320 later in the evening is passed.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District 3, again. So I believe this may be the appropriate time for me to make my motion. Yeah, I see Madam Administrative Officer nodding her head. Okay, so I, as I noted, I don't believe that this is actually necessary because I do think that this resolution falls under those in Rule 5-106E, which allows us to act and vote on a resolution with less than seven days' notice. But that said, because this is a noted gray area and to err on the side of caution, I am making a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution 4720 this evening at the conclusion of the other legislation on our agenda.
Fiedler, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution 47-20 after the bills this evening.
Ms. Lacy?
I'll take a moment to explain my vote. I think the subject matter of Resolution 4720 is important enough that the public should be fully heard, and so I do not support suspending the rules to hear it this evening in lieu of receiving public testimony and comment for our next meeting. Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
I'll take a moment just to explain my vote then, too. Thank you. So this resolution has been crafted and put before the council. It's a relatively straightforward resolution that suggests support for the law enforcement community in Anarondale County, similar to how we have suspended the rules to vote on resolutions on the same night, the past two meetings that have been introduced by my colleagues, 4120 and 4220. I think it's appropriate that we consider this this evening, so I will vote aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay, and I'd like to take a minute to explain my vote. Obviously, I've had the pleasure of my colleagues supporting my wishes to move forward on a resolution the same night that it was introduced, and ordinarily, I give that same courtesy to my colleagues. But I feel like the circumstances surrounding this resolution are different. It has come to my attention today that some county residents had at least knowledge of the subject matter of this resolution ahead of time, and some actually had a copy of the resolution itself. Ordinarily, we operate under, in this council, under the, under the, under the concept of due process, which two major components, notice and opportunity to be heard. And what is especially troubling to me is that notice, and therefore, opportunity to be heard by some of the testimony we have received today, was only afforded to some of the residents in the county. In particular, my county, or my district, District 6, which has one of the larger populations of Black and Brown residents, was not afforded that opportunity to give their testimony in the record tonight and only learned about this resolution around midday today. Anyone who has been paying attention to the national events for the last six months recognizes that this is a controversial issue, and we are not, this is not something that there is one uniform opinion. I am pleased that our law enforcement agencies have generally embraced the change that is, I think, coming across the country. But there is still a real and problematic lack of trust between communities of color and law enforcement. I would just close by saying that while I personally support our local law enforcement officers, in fact, I've supported them very strongly in the budget in recent years to make sure that law enforcement officers are paid competitively with our neighboring jurisdictions. I'm not here on this council to represent only my views. I represent a district with roughly 80,000 residents. And so to bring a controversial issue before us tonight without the opportunity, really even for me to have an opportunity to reach out to my constituents, it feels completely inappropriate. Finally, I question the weight of a resolution supporting law enforcement that comes from a council made up of seven white members with no one else having the opportunity to chime in. And so for that reason, I feel like it's entirely inappropriate for me or this council as a whole to vote on this resolution tonight. And so I will, ordinarily, like I said, love to support my colleagues going forward with a resolution the same night it's introduced, but I cannot in good conscience do so tonight. So I vote nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution 4720 at the end of the meeting is defeated.
Mr. Volkey, did you have something to say?
Yes, Madam Chair. Point of information, could the, either yourself or the administrative officer clarify, did we receive any testimony on Resolution 47-20?
Mr. Volkey, we could not receive testimony itself on 47-20 as it was not on the preliminary agenda or on the website available for people to testify on. So the general public had no knowledge of it until it was on the agenda for tonight. We did have testimony and invitation to audience, not specifically on Resolution 47, but similar topic.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Administrative Officer.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodvian, District 6. Madam Administrative Officer, did we not, however, receive testimony, which we do not ordinarily receive on other nights, offering general support of law enforcement, which appeared very much to be in, I don't think it's a coincidence that that appeared tonight when this resolution was going to be introduced?
Ms. Rodvian, I can't opine to that.
We did receive testimony.
My statement is that we received written testimony, online invitation to audience of a nature similar, but it was not addressed to Resolution 47.
Thank you very much.
For clarification, this is Allison Pickard, Chair, District 2. All online written testimony has been shared with the public on the website, so folks can go and read for themselves the kind of written testimony that this council has received leading up to this meeting tonight. We will proceed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 69-20 as amended.
Bill Number 6920, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Farm or Agricultural Heritage Site Stays and Special Events.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Lori Rhodes, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use, and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. We've discussed this bill several times. I think we're, from where the administration sits, ready to vote on it, although I do understand there's going to be an ask to hold the bill. Just to recall, or just to remind everybody, if you recall, Bill 6920 creates and allows the uses of farm or agricultural heritage site stays and farm or agricultural heritage site special events as either an extension of a temporary use, conditional, or special exemption use. Like I mentioned, we asked that you pass this bill, and I'm now realizing I skipped a line in my talking points. As I mentioned in, in previous hearings on this bill, the county executive did file a notice of apparent conflict of interest with the Ethics Department, the Ethics Commission, on this bill. This bill came out of the Agro-Tourism Commission and is supported by the administration. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council on Bill 69-20 as amended? Seeing none, we will now open the public, oh, Mr. Volkey, did you have a question?
No, I was too early.
Oh. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 69-20 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We've had 10 submissions of written testimony on Bill 6920, which was shared with the council and posted on the county website.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time. We have five people signed up to speak on this bill. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. At this time, I'll call on our first speaker, Ms. Sarah Campbell. Are you with us, Ms. Campbell?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, you may proceed.
Thanks. I'm Sarah Campbell from 4956 Muddy Creek Road, West River, Maryland, New Roots Farm, and I urge you all to support this bill as amended. You've heard me testify in support of this several times now, so I won't repeat myself too much, but just want to urge you one last time to vote in favor of this bill. I think it's come a long way. I've been working on this bill for a couple of years now as a part of my role in the agritourism committee, and we all worked really hard on this, and we worked with the goal in mind of finding a balance between what would be feasible and helpful for farmers while providing opportunities to generate revenue that would also mitigate concerns around safety, noise, and like ultimately would help farmers be good neighbors who are engaging in this process. I have heard some concerns about traffic and noise, but also, you know, there's a lot of farms who are already doing agritourism, and I think this bill really just lays out a process and sets upper limits, which is important. I don't think we're going to see a huge surge or a big change with the passage of this, but I also already have lots of people out to my farm because I'm selling directly to consumers. And an essential part of supporting farm-to-table agriculture and encouraging people to eat and buy locally means getting them out to farms to connect their food. As a farmer, I don't have any interest in like opening up a nightclub on my farm, but really just want to be able to offer farm stays and agritourism activities that align with what I currently do on my farm and which is produce food for my community. I think this bill will help preserve farms and make farming more viable for existing farmers. It will help beginning farmers who are getting started, and it'll support other local businesses like food and retail during a time when many of them are struggling. Agritourism benefits farmers and the public, and it helps create a mutual interest. And as I've said before, people love coming out to the farm, and they love learning about agriculture, and there's so much that we can teach and share with people to help them better appreciate our farms and our community and our watershed. And I think that this bill will go a long way in increasing those types of activities and creating opportunities for people to engage with farms.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. That is your two minutes. Thank you for joining us this evening. My next speaker is Ms. Anna Chaney. Ms. Chaney, are you with us?
I'm here.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and council members, Anna Chaney, Honey's Harvest Farm, Lexington, Maryland. I'm testifying tonight as a family farmer. We are a permaculture farm here in southern Anarondale County. We cultivate elderberries, industrial hemp, medicinal herbs, and nutrient-dense perennial fruits, nuts, and some especially vegetable crops with my son and my two daughters. We host the weekly Farmer's Co-op Market with fellow local farmers every Sunday where we all sell our products and engage with our customers. So I really appreciate your support of farming and our agricultural heritage in Anarondale County. Based upon the pressures seen out there of development and the influx of residents and ever-increasing population in the state, the country, the world, it's never been more important than now to bring our county into parity with surrounding counties and states when it comes to these accessory uses and opportunities for sustainability for farms. As the population grows, the demand for healthy, real food grows too, as does the desire to connect with farms in any way possible. As we know, the more people, the less land. In reading our farm's agricultural preservation easement last evening with my 19-year-old son, we noticed that the terms of the agreement last until the farm can no longer be profitable in agriculture as per Maryland Code 1515. as per Maryland Code fifteen fifteen oh four oh four. The previous owners of our farm sold the rights in two thousand and four. By two thousand and thirty-four, this hundred-sixty-acre farm in Southern Anarod County can no longer be profitable as a farm. And considering the level of development surrounding this farm, the easement may be terminated. It would be a travesty if this would be the case. I believe that by affording our farmers the opportunity to host a very limited amount of special events and overnight farm stays, you will not only be condoning a vital connection between consumers' farms and farmland, but you will be equalling the playing field and allowing our farmers in this county to stay in the agricultural arena, just as fellow farmers and other jurisdictions throughout the state, county, and the world already do. And most importantly, you will know that you have given farms a sustainable way to continue farming for future generations. I hereby request your favorable vote for Bill number sixty-nine twenty in its current form with no further amendments or delays. Separately, as a note from myself as chairperson of the Agriculture, Farming, and Agritourism Commission, I will commit to studying the impacts of this bill should there be any unintentional consequences and/or should the commission be lobbied to do so on behalf of any stakeholder in this county.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chaney.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our speaker number three, Ms. Jessica Clark. Are you with us, Ms. Clark?
Yes, I am.
You may proceed.
Unlike Sarah, I am going to repeat myself because I feel the same way today as I did a month ago when we had this talk. My name is Jessie Clark, and my address is eighty-nine seventy Saint Andrews Drive, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. I'd like to express my support of Bill sixty-nine twenty as amended and ask the council to support this bill as well. Agriculture is alive, yet threatened in the state of Maryland. As one of the top ten industries in the state, agri-terre is a key element in keeping our agricultural land in active farming. As our families become more removed from life on the farm, we see a rise in popularity and demand for agritourism. Most importantly, when we, when people connect with the farmland and the fresh local food and the farmers who grew it, they then value the land and want to preserve it, which is the beauty of agritourism. This bill is vital to allowing farms to continue farming as it provides the opportunity for farmers to host a limited number of special events and to offer farm stays for guests to connect with the land and the farm. This provides accessory income to working farmers who are wanting to make a living on the farm and ensure that they can hold on to their farms for future generations to come. Another benefit of special events at farms in Anarod County is that residual local businesses will benefit. Special events will employ caterers, florists, bakers, transportation companies, and lodging in Anarod County. These local businesses employ residents who will also see the financial benefit of these events. The concerns of traffic and noise are nonissues due to the conditions set forth in these bills, requiring proper parking and screening of activities from neighbors. Existing noise ordinances will prevent late-night noise disturbances. Thank you for your support of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Next on my list is Ms. Kathy Graham. Are you with us, Ms. Graham?
I am, I assume you can hear me?
Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. My name is Kathy Graham. I live at four oh four Arundel Road in Fairhaven in South County. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Advocates for Herring Bay. Our group has written to the council on two occasions in October to share our support for farming, but also express our substantive and procedural concerns about this bill. I'd like to take this opportunity to briefly recap those concerns and urge you to address them, if not tonight, as soon as possible. Our first concern is impervious surfaces. Under this bill, the scale and intensity of impervious surfaces is left to the discretion of the property owner. This contrasts with Howard County and other jurisdictions that require that the scale and intensity of structures for accessory uses must also be subordinate to the scale and intensity of the principal use. We urge you to adopt similar benchmarks to keep the proportions matched. Our second concern is forest and stream degradation. Unless farmers convert their fields to parking lots, they may be cutting down trees to make way for tourism activities, including their parking lots. Similarly, carving up forests for motorized activities could damage sensitive forests and riparian habitats. We believe that forest loss should not be an unintended consequence of tourism activities. Our third concern is accountability, specifically the lack of any legal mechanism to assign liability for complying with the conditions of these events. As written, you may be leaving farmers, citizens, and the environment vulnerable to potential abuse by bad actors. Who is going to be liable if a farmer leases out their land for an event that goes awry? Is it the farmer or the operator? Finally, we believe the county needs performance standards to address the operational challenges of crowd management. Problems of noise, safety, or fields of jiffy-johns are not a function of land use, but of individual actions. We urge the county to develop enforceable standards for these tourism activities as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Thank you so much. The last person on my list is Mr. Mike Lofton. Mr. Lofton, are you with us this evening?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Okay, I'm Mike Lofton, and I live at five oh eight Polling House Road in Harwood. I'm a fifty-year resident of South County. And I've spoken a couple of times on this, and I certainly share Kathy's concerns. This is a bill that's not ready to become a law. It's a proposal that's not created out of any kind of thorough analysis of the, analysis of the industry it purports to help. There's no strategic plan or vision for a sustainable agricultural industry in Anarod County. And there's no evidence, other than anecdotal comments, that this will make a difference in the long-term decline that's underway in the county. Sixty-nine twenty allows up to thirty special events. That's every weekend between April and October for concerts, festivals, and by our analysis, appears to affect potentially over six hundred properties in the county. The county's more recent analysis up that number to nine hundred. I would urge you to question the county about that. Specifically, the first eight events have been changed to permit attendance based on a ratio of twenty-five per acre. Forty-acre farms, not an uncommon sight, can have a thousand guests. That's, that's a lot, and run until eleven o'clock at night on Friday and Saturday nights. The overnight stays are particularly troublesome. The bill that came in from the administration and came from the commission required a special exception on this. That provided for both the opportunity to speak and be heard for residents. That's been amended out, so there will be no notice or opportunity to speak. And again, there's no evaluation or enforcement procedure here. The introduction of these intense commercial uses in residential districts will not be evaluated for positive or negative impacts. It's a bad bill. You need to start over on this, and there are certainly things we can do, but this is not wise.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing on Bill number sixty-nine dash twenty as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number sixty-nine dash twenty as amended.
Bill number sixty-nine twenty, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Farm or Agricultural Heritage Site Stays and Special Events.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a couple of notes. I, obviously, I have a large number of parcels in my district that are governed by this bill. So I've spent a lot of time in the last month and a half or so since the bill has been here trying to really digest all of the details of it and understand the thorough impact. I do want to note, one of the commenters just mentioned that the bill was amended to allow twenty-five people per acre on the temporary uses of zero to eight. The original version of the bill had no limit on the number of people. The amendment actually limited, it capped that capacity at twenty-five people per acre. So I do want to make sure that that is understood by anyone who was, who was listening. But beyond that, I had been working on another amendment for today. Some questions that I asked this weekend and late last week led me to understand that my amendment actually would have some unintended consequences that I did not want to introduce today and put on the bill. I would like a little bit more time to finish working on this bill. We have time, the bill doesn't expire until, I believe, December twelfth or so, so we could vote on it at the December seventh meeting. I would like to make a motion to hold the bill for two weeks so that it can come back at the second meeting in November. I may not have another amendment at that time, I may have an amendment at that time, but I'm not quite done digesting it, and I would really appreciate just a couple more weeks if that would be okay with all of y'all. So that's my motion.
Let me repeat the motion. So there's a motion on the table to hold the vote and bring this bill back the second meeting in November, is that?
Correct, the next meeting.
Is there a second?
There's a second, Councilman Andrew Pruski, thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill sixty-nine dash twenty as amended and bring it back November sixteenth.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Looks like we're going to hear some, from some more farmers next week. We've gotten to know them well, aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill sixty-nine twenty as amended to the second meeting in November is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number seventy-seven dash twenty as amended.
Bill number seventy-seven twenty, An Ordnance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is Ms. Carrier from Office of Planning and Zoning and Ms. Kenny from Office of Law. We heard this bill at the previous council meeting. It was amended. Bill seventy-seven twenty will allow four properties to connect to public sewer within the Cox Creek Sewer area instead of the Broad Neck Sewer Service area. You have in your packet a map, this is in District Five. We offered the, I'll call it a clarifying amendment at the previous meeting, and, and we ask that you pass this bill this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number seventy-seven dash twenty as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we have not received any submissions of written testimony on Bill number seventy-seven twenty.
And we did not have any members of the public sign up to speak this evening? Therefore, the public hearing on Bill number seventy-seven dash twenty as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number seventy-seven dash twenty as amended.
Bill number seventy-seven twenty, An Ordnance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number seventy-seven dash twenty as amended.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number seventy-seven twenty is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill number eighty-four dash twenty.
Bill number eighty-four twenty, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Mr. Teru from Budget, Mr. Sheknovich from, and Mr. Stansky from our schools, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Bill eighty-four dash twenty recognizes a little over twenty-nine million dollars of additional federal and state grants to the Board of Education and increases the appropriations allocated by these grants. Our experts from the school system are here to answer any questions along with, along with Mr. Teru. With that, we'll ask that you move the bill this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, for ethics protocol. My spouse is an employee of the school system, and the normal ethics form was submitted and approved by the Ethics Council. Thank you so much, I just wanted to go on the record, so that's fully disclosed for the public.
Ms. Radbien?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Radbien, District Six. In accordance with our ethics protocol, I would also like to disclose that I am a part-time employee for Anarod County Public Schools.
Are there any questions regarding Bill number eighty-four dash twenty for the virtual panel this evening? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing on Bill number eighty-four dash twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we have received no submissions of written testimony on Bill number eighty-four twenty.
And we did not have any members of the public sign up to speak. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill number eighty-four dash twenty is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-four dash twenty.
Bill number eighty-four twenty, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriations.
Last chance for discussion on Bill number eighty-four dash twenty. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number eighty-four dash twenty.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill eighty-four twenty is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-five dash twenty.
Bill number eighty-five twenty, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works Utilities, Water and Wastewater System Connections and Charges.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the council. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table from our Department of Public Works is Ms. Henry, Ms. Clooney, and Mr. Biggerstaff from Finance, Ms. McQuade from Law, Ms. Kenny. Bill eighty-five twenty was discussed at the work session. It eliminates the user connection charge, which removes the option to connect a public water sewer under a contract administered by the Department of Public Works. The bill replaces that process with the new TAP connection permit or requirement, or a requirement for a public works agreement. The TAP permit process, we believe, will save property owners money through lower construction costs and a faster completion time. The current process requires the county to contract with a utility contractor, and then the county serves as the general contractor for connecting the property to the county water and sewer system. Because each connection is unique, general pricing is often impractical and not accurate. As a result, the county's contract pricing is not competitive. So to save money, property owners are using the public works agreement alternative more often than the county's contracted connection process. This new process, the TAP permit process, will provide property owners, under certain conditions that do not require a PWA, an alternative to that process. We expect it to be less costly than the current private connection process. In the new process, the property owner controls the hiring of their own licensed utility contractor. They would pay two hundred twenty-five dollars with annual CPI adjustments for the fee. That fee covers the county's administrative costs for construction, inspection, EPW engineering, review, financial services, and management of the process. To be clear, that's the two hundred twenty-five they pay to us, the county, not the contractor. DPW and inspections and permits would provide property owners with a list of approved county licensed utility contractors who have been certified to perform connection work. Contractors would be required to provide an annual bond security in event there is any issues with the connection they install. So with that, we're, we're ready to go. I think we might have an amendment. Yeah, we have an amendment which we'll offer at the appropriate time.
Are there any questions of my colleagues for the administration regarding Bill eighty-five dash twenty? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number eighty-five dash twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we have received no submissions of written testimony on Bill eighty-five twenty.
And we did not have any members of the public sign up to speak. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill number eighty-five dash twenty is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty- Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-five dash twenty.
Bill number eighty-five twenty, an ordinance concerning public works utilities, water and wastewater system connections and charges.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I believe there is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
We'll wait for it to come up. Amendment Number One, this amendment exempts the petition projects known as Coriander Place, Ginger Ville Water Project, and the Heritage Harbor Sewer Takeover and Heritage Harbor Water Takeover from the provisions of the ordinance, and provides that the provisions governing user connection charges in effect prior to the effective date of the ordinance shall apply to the projects.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Lacy, so moved.
Is there a second?
Allison Puski, second.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. This is your amendment. Is there discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Think the administrator's description of the amendment is pretty self-explanatory. It exempts a couple of petition projects from the provisions of the of this bill. And so with that, happy to answer any questions, but ask that you accept the amendment.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. Since a number and perhaps all of the projects you mentioned are in District Six, I'm just curious if you could explain the cost implications for District Six to this amendment.
I'm going to ask Ms. Henry or somebody from DPW to take that.
Yeah, I'm not. Hi, this is Karen Henry, Assistant Director, Public Works. Those petition projects have already been assessed. Well, they've already in the process, but they haven't been assessed yet. So they've already been told what their rate would be. They it was approved by the council, the rates that they would be paying for their and their their case, they're still paying the front foot assessment. However, it hasn't actually been assessed yet because the projects haven't been built. What happens with the user connection fee is we when the in the petition project, the user connection fee is included in the it's it's calculated into the project cost. So it's part of the project. However, it's actually in the old way of doing it, before Bill eighty-twenty was passed, we would take the user connection charge out because it had a different financing rate. So we would assess them, the front foot assessment, subtract out the user connection, and not charge the user connection until the actual connection was made. In this case, these folks already been told what their front foot was going to be, and that the user connection would be paid separately and differently. So at this point, they would have to come back, have a whole new community vote to do anything different. So rather than to go through all that, we're just asking that they they be exempt from this and go about the payment that they knew they were going to have when they agreed to the project.
Madam Chair, may I follow up, please?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm still not clear, though, which method would incur greater cost for the residents in these projects?
So they're going to pay the user connection charge instead of and because we're already going through the petition process to make the I'm not explaining this very well, so forgive me. I feel like this is more making it more complicated than it needs to be. So they're just going to follow the old method, which there's it's still going to be the costs is incurred to the to the county that they pay back usually through the front foot and then separately through user connection. So they'll still do that. What they're going to what what would have to happen otherwise, it's going to be the same cost in the end. It's not going to be different. But the way they're paying it is different than this new method. Does that make sense? We still would have to hire someone to make the connection, and they would pay it. However, instead of it being incorporated into their front foot assessment, it has to be paid separately because that's what they agreed to when they agreed to the whole petition process. So if we were to change that now for them, we would have to go back. They would have to be assessed in EDU now instead of the front foot assessment. And this just got caught up in that, that we had not anticipated until, you know, further reflection on what would happen to them specifically. It's just these two projects that are in this kind of in-between phase where they were told and agreed to and had valid on what they would pay, but they haven't actually been assessed yet because the project hasn't been completed.
So would it be correct to say, as you said, the cost would be the same but paid in a different way? And that counts for there there wouldn't be even a difference because of, you know, a difference in financing mechanism?
I don't believe so in the case because they're going to what I guess it is a little bit. Kim, can you answer about the financing?
Yes, Kim Clooney from Department of Public Works. The financing for for those particular projects are the same. In some instances, we may have, you know, if we have grant funding or something like that, that can cause a difference. But that doesn't apply to either of these. So they would still have the same the same terms and the same length of time to make that payment.
Okay, thank both of thank you to both of you very much. I just want to make sure that my constituents are not missing out on a deal.
Totally understand. Thank you.
Are there any questions, other questions regarding Amendment Number One? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Puski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. Bill number eighty-five dash twenty as amended will be heard on November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-six dash twenty.
Bill number eighty-six twenty, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, subdivision, site development, plan review timelines and requirements.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is our Deputy CIO for Land Use, Ms. Rhodes, and our Environmental Policy Director, Mr. Johnston from Office of Planning and Zoning. We have Ms. Wilson, our Director, Mr. Kai Ziegler, Ms. Allen, and Ms. Krenitz, and from Law, Ms. Bray. The purpose of Bill eighty-six twenty is to amend procedural plan review timelines, allowing additional time for the applicant to prepare their application, which will reduce the number of time extension modification requests that add cost to development and strain on staff resources. The administration has a package of amendments we are preparing that we were not able to get ready in time for this evening's meeting. Some of them have been raised by our discussions with the council at the work session. Some of them have been raised in conversation with each of you individually. Some of them have been raised as we've reflected on the bill ourselves internally. The administration has requested that the council include this bill. If the hold is accepted, that we include this bill on the work session, which is coming up on a week from tomorrow to further discuss those amendments. So at that time, I think it would be appropriate to discuss them at that time. With that, we're happy to answer any questions on the bill as it as it stands now, but knowing that we hope the council will will take a bit of a pause on this so we can make sure we get it right. So we'll be asking for a hold. I guess right now is when I ask for it, unless you have any questions. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the administration regarding eighty-six twenty as currently drafted? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill number eighty-six dash twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we have had no submissions of written testimony on Bill eighty-six twenty.
And we did not have any members of the public sign up to speak this evening. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill number eighty-six dash twenty is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-six dash twenty.
Bill number eighty-six twenty, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, subdivision, site development, plan review timelines and requirements.
Mr. Puski?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the administration to hold this bill till November sixteenth, council meeting eighty-six one. Thank you.
There a second on the motion?
Hare, second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill eighty-six dash twenty until the November sixteenth council meeting.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Puski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill number eighty-six twenty to the November sixteen meeting is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-seven.
Bill number eighty-seven twenty, an ordinance concerning public safety and zoning, pet care businesses and commercial kennels.
Ms. Fiedler, you are the sponsor on this bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This bill is pretty simple. It adds to it adds one word to two sections of our code. Under the Animal Control section of the code, this bill adds the word training to the definition of pet care businesses. And under the Zoning section of the code, it adds the word training to the definition of commercial kennels. Training of a pet can range from standard obedience training or specialized training for working animals. In some cases, this does require overnight stays with the trainer for intensified training. Without this update to the code, these facilities face challenges in opening and providing their much-needed skills to owners and organizations. I ask for my colleague's support of this bill this evening.
Thank you. Would the administration like to respond at this time?
Madam Chair, thank you. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Miller from OPC and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. The administration supports this bill. It it seems like a pretty minor change from where we sit, so we're we're okay and appreciate councilwoman Fiedler sharing it with us in advance to review.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council at this time on Bill eighty-seven dash twenty? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number eighty-seven dash twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we had one submission of written testimony on Bill eighty-seven twenty. It was shared with the council and posted on the county website.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time. We have one individual signed up to speak on this bill. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. At this time, Ms. Kim Greco, are you are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity for you guys to be listening. I am a professional dog trainer and have run a business in Anarondle County for almost twelve years. And I'm very excited about the opportunity to be updating the code so that training can be incorporated into the legal aspects of what we're doing so that when we go to try to expand a business or have some sort of a dog training business license with the county, we were running into some problems because the code as it existed already talked about boarding or grooming, but it didn't talk about training. So I certainly appreciate everybody's willingness to consider this as something that's quite important to Anarondle County, and having well-trained pets, and especially those working towards pet therapy certifications and being able to continue to support all aspects of our community is clearly important. I appreciate that.
Ms. Ms. Greco, could you please state your address for the record?
Certainly. It is one-four-seven-four Shot Town Road, Annapolis, Maryland.
Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill number eighty-seven dash twenty is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-seven dash twenty.
Bill number eighty-seven twenty, an ordinance concerning public safety and zoning, pet care businesses and commercial kennels.
Is there any discussion before we make a vote? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number eighty-seven dash.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Puski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number eighty-seven twenty is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-eight dash twenty.
Bill number eighty-eight twenty, an ordinance concerning zoning identification signs on automobile gasoline station canopies.
Ms. Hare, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. We discussed this bill at the work session. I'll give a brief overview for anyone who's listening. The very beginning of our term back in late two thousand eighteen or early two thousand nineteen, we had a presentation about sort of the number of variances that are granted in Anarondle County and how we're an outlier in that respect. And there was some discussion about some areas of the code may be outdated that are leading to sort of these repetitive variances that that may just require a code update. One such area looks to be these sort of canopy signs. I've taken a look over the last handful of years. There've been at least a dozen of these variances granted in terms of number and size of the canopy signs that can go over these gas stations. And then recently, in fact, in last year, I believe there were at least five of these variances that came before the Administrative Hearing Officer. In one of the or in fact, in a couple of them, the Administrative Hearing Officer sort of suggests perhaps that the code is outdated. So if I'm reading from AHO Decision nineteen-two oh seven and two oh eight, I'm on page fifteen. The hearing officer says, quote, "The evidence shows that the code provisions relating to canopy signs may be outdated. This leads to a conclusion that the code may need to be amended. However, the Office of Administrative Hearings is not given the authority by the code to amend to the code. Amending the code is limited to the county council." And it goes on. And he suggested a number of ways in which maybe the code has not caught up with essentially what present-day reality is for these canopy signs. So this just allows three signs instead of one, and it changes the square footage. Again, most of these variances have been granted in the last number of years, so I don't think it will have a massive practical impact in terms of the difference that it makes, but it will cut down on the number of variances that have to come before the Administrative Hearing Officer, and that will help with an efficiency standpoint. So with that, I would ask for your support.
Thank you. Does the administration, would they like to weigh in at this time, Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Sticking with me for this one from Office of Planning and Zoning is Ms. Lynn Miller from Law, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. The administration is no opposition to this bill. I'll I'll note sort of along the same lines as as the sponsor noted. This has been a conversation for several years now that that our sign code needs a comprehensive review. Generally, it's preferable to to do a comprehensive approach. However, we recognize that's not always practicable, so we we have no issue supporting this bill and happy to answer any technical questions council may have. I do understand there is an amendment coming, but I've been told it's technical, so we should be good to go.
Are there any questions for the sponsor from my colleagues? Ms. Hare, Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah Lacy, District One. I just wanted to thank the sponsor, Ms. Hare, for providing the research that you did behind the amendment, which was a little bit obscure and and arcane, and it greatly saved time and effort by doing that. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
We will now open the public hearing on Bill number eighty-eight dash twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we've received no submissions of written testimony on Bill eighty-eight twenty.
Thank you. We did not have any members of the public sign up to speak. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill number eighty-eight dash twenty is now. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill number eighty-eight dash twenty is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-eight dash twenty.
Bill number eighty-eight twenty, an ordinance concerning zoning, identification signs on automobile gasoline station canopies.
And since this bill didn't generate any discussion, really, we'll just move right to the amendment. Madam Secretary, once it's posted, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one. This technical amendment makes changes to existing law consistent with the rules of legislative drafting.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
Ms. Hare, did you want to elaborate any further than the technical amendment?
It, not particularly. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Thank you.
Do the administration have any issues with this? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
And seeing that that was a technical amendment, we can move forward with the vote. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number eighty-eight dash twenty as amended.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye again.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill eighty-eight twenty as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number forty-three dash twenty.
Resolution number forty-three twenty, resolution approving the continued service of Michael Borges as Acting Superintendent, Department of Detention Facilities.
This is a county executive resolution. Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. Joining me is the subject of our resolution, Acting Superintendent Michael Borges from Law, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. Resolution forty-three dash twenty extends the service of Michael Borgesa as Acting Superintendent from November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty through March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Superintendent Borgesa has done a fantastic job and we'd like to keep him on in the acting capacity.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council on Resolution forty-three dash twenty? Ms. Radbien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radbien, District Six. I'm really just curious. Are we saying your last name correctly?
Uh, no, ma'am, you're not. It's actually pronounced Borgesa, but people have been mutilating it my entire life, so I don't, it's okay.
Thank you.
Did I, I think I got it correct two out of the three times.
And you're doing good with that.
I was not intending to embarrass Mr. Baron.
But it is fun to do that.
Is there any further discussion on Resolution forty-three dash twenty? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution forty-three dash twenty.
I wish I had the chance to read it in again so I could pronounce his name correctly. Ms. Lacy.
I'm tempted to pronounce his name just to see. I give up. Aye.
Mr. Volkey. Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution number forty-three is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution forty-four dash twenty.
Resolution number forty-four twenty, resolution approving the nominations of members to the Anaronda County Human Relations Commission.
This is an administration resolution with Ms. Radbien as co-sponsor. Mr. Baron, you have the floor. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Schultz, you have the floor. Excuse me. I always do that.
Problem. Thank you so much. Resolution forty-four twenty, oh, by the way, Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office, with me is Lori Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Forty-four twenty reappoints four members to the Human Relations Commission. Mary Dodony will be reappointed for County Executive seat. Eugene Peterson will be reappointed for the District Four seat. Mr. Khalid Syed will be reappointed for the District Five seat. And Tony Strong Pratt will be reappointed for the District Six seat. Each of these members were initially appointed for, to serve one-year terms, and they will now be reappointed for three-year terms ending November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. You should have their resumes in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions and I appreciate everybody for your reappointment recommendations.
Are there any questions for Ms. Schultz regarding Resolution forty-four dash twenty? Ms. Hare. I've done that all night. Ms. Lacy, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah Lacy, District One. I just want to, I didn't co-sponsor this, but I wanted to extend my thanks to all of the folks that I think will be appointing tonight for your service on the commission. And as it may or may not be changing over the next couple of years, what you do is really important. I know it takes a lot of time and I sincerely appreciate your dedication to doing it well. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution forty-four dash twenty.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution number forty-four twenty is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution forty-five dash twenty.
Resolution number forty-five twenty, resolution confirming appointments to the Board of Trustees for the Anaronda County Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
This is also an administration resolution. Ms. Schultz, you have the floor. I see Ms. Radbien is also a co-sponsor.
Thank you so much. Yes, Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. With me again is Lori Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Resolution forty-five twenty appoints four members to the Board of Trustees for the Anaronda County Retiree Health Benefits Trust. Three of the nominees have been elected by their respective unions to serve. Obie Atkinson will be reappointed for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Kevin Nethers will be appointed to serve the remainder of the term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And Drew Martin will be appointed to serve the remainder of the term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The county executive nominates David Jupe, who is knowledgeable in finances and investing, to serve the remainder of the term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Jupe is currently a legislative analyst for the Prince George's County Office of Management and Budget. He served for thirty years in the Department of Fiscal Services and Department of Legislative Services for the Maryland General Assembly, the last nineteen of those years serving as Senior Operating Budget Manager. You should have their resumes or biographies in front of you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council for Ms. Schultz regarding Resolution forty-five dash twenty? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution forty-five dash twenty.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution forty-five twenty is adopted.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, is there any other business to be brought before the county council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Hare, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Fiedler.
All in favor? Aye.
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 The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until six PM on November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Stay well, be safe, have a great night, everybody. Thank you.